Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission here on September 12, 2024. So we're gonna go ahead and get started here. And without further ado, can I get a roll call vote to determine a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. This is a Little Rock Planning Commission meeting for October 10, 2024. Is there a roll call vote? Brown?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Person?
Here.
Samad?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Russell? Vickers?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. I presume all of the commissioners got a chance to review the minutes? Can you hear me now? All right. Again, I presume all of the commissioners have got a chance to look at the minutes, and I would love to entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the minutes. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell? Vickers?
Yes.
Minassar approved.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving right along here. We're gonna move to our consent agenda. And Monte, if we can have the reading for that?
Following is a consent agenda. It keeps going off. Okay. Following is a consent agenda at Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of September 12, 2024. The first group of items are on for withdrawal or deferral. Item number one, file number S-1963, is being deferred to the October 10 agenda due to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item two, S-1976, has been withdrawn without prejudice at request of the applicant. Item five, S-1978, is being deferred to the October 10 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. We're adding item nine to this list, file number Z-10040. This item is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item 12, Z-7595A, is being deferred to the October 10 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 13, Z-8911A, is being deferred to the October 10 agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. And item 16, Z-10024, is being deferred to the October 10 agenda at the request of the applicant. Following are the items on consent approval. Item number three, Z-10019, first responders ECDC daycare CUP 5217 Mabelville Pike. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E, staff analysis, and the staff update of the Agenda staff report. Item four, 10022 AYS Global Duplex CUP 1912 Dennison Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item six, S-1979, Ali addition preliminary platte 7520 North Chico Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary platte subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item seven, Z-10037, Nun Duplex CUP 1001 Dennison Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item eight, Z-10039 Phillips Duplexes CUP 3222 Bishop Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item 10, Z-10031, a rezoning from C2 to C3. South of number seven, Office Park Drive, staff recommends approval of the requested C3 rezoning. Items 11 and 11.1 have been moved to the regular agenda for public hearing. Item 14, Z-9407C, Village at Whispering Valley, revised PRD. South side of Quartz Rock Drive and Slate Rock Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised PRD zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item 15, Z-9904A, CSA Logistics Revised PDC 8801 Driller Lane. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised PDC subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. Item 17 is being moved to the regular agenda for public hearing. And the final item on consent approval is item 18, MSP 2024-01, Master Street Plan Amendment, which is removal of a portion of West 57th Street between Guyer Springs Road and Mabelville Pike. Staff recommends approval of the removal of the West 57th Street extension, a collector, from the Master Street Plan. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you for the reading, Monte. The reading has been so read. I'd love to have it entertain a motion.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell? Vickers?
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved.
If your item was on the consent agenda and has been approved, you are more than welcome to leave at this particular time. You are more than welcome to stay, but you do not have to. So we will give you just a minute to depart. If your item was moved to the regular agenda, then obviously you would need to stay and hear your agenda item here. And it looked like we have three items that has been moved to the regular agenda. And we would do it in sequence of 11, 11.1, and 17. All right. So Monte, if you will, before I get started on this time of deferral, I can let them know that we do not have... What, did you want to speak first, Monte?
Well, I was gonna say, Mr. Gosden will present item 11. Then I'll present item 11.1. You can talk about them at the same time and then take two votes at the end.
Okay. All right. So just to... All the commissioners can have an understanding. We will have two separate votes, but they will be discussed at the same time. So the first time, I guess we have the applicant for 11, 11.1. If they're present, they can come up here while we're doing the reading. Monte, if you will.
Item number 11 is LU2024-1901, a land use amendment at southwest and southeast of Highway 10 and Shalamar Drive. The applicant requests a land use amendment from residential low density to neighborhood commercial. The applicant is located... The application is located along the southeast and southwest intersection of Highway 10 and Shalamar Drive in the Cheneau Planning District. This land use amendment accompanies a zoning map amendment request. It is applicant intent to rezone the site to neighborhood commercial district C1 zoning, and that's file Z-00... I'm sorry, Z-10036. The subject site is 9.87 acres of undeveloped wood track with no existing structures on the property. The current zoning is single-family district R2. The site is at the entrance of the Cheneau Valley subdivision along Highway 10. The property is also located in the Highway 10 overlay district. The property is located on the northern boundary of the Cheneau Planning District and the Barrett Planning District directly to the north across Highway 10. Cheneau... The Cheneau Planning District is centered on the Cheneau Valley and Cheneau Mountain area. Residential low density dominates the area. The major commercial areas sit on Highway 10 and Cheneau Parkway and Rawling Road and Cheneau Parkway intersections. There are also several smaller commercial nodes at intersections of major roads along Highway 10 and Cheneau Parkway. The Barrett Planning District also concentrates non-residential uses along Highway 10. The Highway 10-Shalamar intersection is a collector arterial intersection. Collectors provide connections to arterials and the neighborhoods, while arterial's primary function is to move traffic through the area. Most of the land south of Highway 10 is being commercially developed with single-family subdivisions, and will have direct access to the application site from Shalamar Drive. This allows the application site to function as a traditional neighborhood commercial area. Staff recognizes this intersection as a potential business area. Stack recommends approval of the applicant's request to amend the land use designation from residential low density to neighborhood commercial.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have the applicant present here. If so, please state your name for the record. I'm sorry, excuse me, Monte, before that.
We have the staff report on 11.1. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, excuse me. 11.1.
Okay. Item 11.1, file number Z-10036. This is the rezoning from R2 to C1 and OS, again at the southeast-southwest corners of Highway 10 and Shalamar Drive. The applicant requests to rezone the property of these two corners from R2 to C1 and OS for future commercial development. The site is currently undeveloped. The applicant proposes to rezone 3.78 acres at the southeast corner of the intersection to C1 with 8 tenths of an acre to be zoned OS, open space, which is a 50-foot wide strip between the proposed C1 zoning and the single-family lots to the south. The applicant proposes to rezone the 6.09 acres at the southwest corner of the intersection to C1 with 1.6 acres being OS zoning, open space zoning, which is a 50-foot wide strip between the proposed C1 and the single-family lots to the south of it. Staff is in support of the requested rezoning from R2 to C1 and OS to allow for the development of neighborhood commercial. Staff feels the proposal is in character with the neighborhood, will have no adverse impact on the area, and staff recommends approval of the requested C1 and OS rezoning.
Thank you. Now, applicant, please state your name for the record.
It's all now? Thank you very much. A good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Moore and staff. My name is Bill Spivey. I'm an attorney with the firm of Wright, Lindsay &amp; Jennings, and it's my privilege to appear here this afternoon together with Mr. Tim Daters, the firm White, Daters &amp; Associates, on behalf of the owner and applicant, Potlatch Deltic Real Estate. The... And we appreciate the opportunity to present these two items together. It makes more sense, I think, to bring them together and present them at the same time, and thank you for that opportunity to do that. The proposal and the request, we believe, is straightforward. The graphics that you have and the graphic that you now see before you clearly illustrate the allocation between open space and the additional open space in these neighborhoods surrounding them. As the staff analysis and presentation indicated, this is in a corridor with other commercial office and institutional uses. The change to allow for the neighborhood commercial here, we believe, is entirely appropriate, given the location and given the other uses nearby. Now, as is typical of our practice, we are happy to answer any questions that any member of the commission may have now, or if not, then we would ask to defer our time until after others, who we understand are here this afternoon to speak. Let me just say that every opportunity was given to meet with the neighborhood associations before the meeting and to present this and to discuss the proposals with them. Some of the people who went to those meetings, maybe here tonight, there may be others. We'd like to certainly hear from them before we respond, but as I said, we're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have initially. Tim, do you have anything else to add?
No. We did meet with the two neighborhood associations, with officers of those associations, and we're glad that they took the time to meet with us, and we appreciate that.
Any questions? All right.
President, we do have several cards in opposition.
We'll defer our time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're gonna move to the oppositions here, and this is for 11 and 11.1. The first card we have is Tony Woody. If you're present, please come to the podium.
Can I defer to Mary?
Of course. Mary. All right. Let's see, hold on, let me look for Mary's card here. Mary Anell-Miskin? All right.
A little short. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to address a matter of significant importance to my neighborhood, the proposed rezoning of the southeast and southwest corner of Highway 10 and Shalamar Place from its current designation to neighborhood commercial. My name is Mary Ann L. Miskin, and I'm a resident of 22 Tournay Circle, Little Rock, Arkansas, along with my husband and our two children. I'm also a design professional at a local landscape architecture and civil engineering firm. I've been involved in many Planning Commission meetings across the great state of Arkansas, advocating for various clients and developers for their properties to be rezoned. I never considered that one day I would be on the other side of the aisle, not advocating for a client, but fighting against rezoning in my own neighborhood. I understand more than most, as it greatly affects my profession, the need for growth and development in our city. However, rezoning these particular parcels to neighborhood commercial could have a profound and lasting negative impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding area. I'd like to outline several key concerns that should be considered before moving forward with this decision. Traffic and safety concerns. The addition of commercial activities in this area would undoubtedly lead to a surge in traffic. Our neighborhood is located directly adjacent to Joe T. Robinson High School and Elementary School. Moreover, this area is in a school traffic zone with speed limits of 25 miles per hour during pickup and drop-off times. We currently have three police officers directing traffic during these times to increase safety. A security officer by the name of Victor Montgomery actually died after being hit by a vehicle while directing traffic outside of Joe T. Robinson on the first day of school last year. If a commercial area were to be added here, this would only increase the likelihood of another death, risking the safety of the children who attend Joe T. Robinson and the officers who keep them safe on a daily basis. Impact on property values. These two lots are the entry to our neighborhood. It is the first thing that you see when you enter off of Cantrell. If changed to commercial, these parcels could be developed for a variety of uses that we as residents would have no say in. For example, the current uses allowed under the zoning designation include, but are not limited to, cigar, tobacco, and candy store, laundromat, and medical marijuana dispensary. Imagine a family coming to look for their forever home, and the first thing they see when they enter our neighborhood is a tobacco store rather than a beautiful green space with a lovely and vegetated entry that enhances the aesthetic and character of our neighborhood. Furthermore, the shift to commercial could lead to decreased property values, affecting residents' investments and the overall economic stability of our neighborhood. Environmental impacts. I would be remiss, as a landscape designer, not to mention the environmental impacts of this rezoning. Existing tree canopy is a valuable natural resource that is a part of what makes Cheneau unique, and it provides several benefits from a functional and environmental standpoint. We currently have a beautiful green space on these two lots that serves as a noise and physical barrier between residential homes and the traffic of Cantrell. As my family and I live directly south of this green space, we witnessed a variety of wildlife in our backyard that would lose their home if these two parcels were to be rezoned and developed. Commercial development also often leads to increased impervious surfaces, such as asphalt and concrete, which contribute to higher stormwater runoff and can exasperate local flooding issues affecting residents' properties downstream. Overall, this is a trend that is happening across Cheneau. Valuable tree canopy is being eradicated on entire lots so that massive earthwork projects can get underway to make these lots pad-ready for development, including but not limited to the northwest corner of Cheneau Parkway and Rawling Road, along with the lots on the northwest and southeast corners of Cheneau Parkway and Cantrell, not to mention the various shopping centers that have been built along Cheneau Parkway that are currently sitting empty. Not only does this increase erosion, sedimentation, and reduces habitat quality, but it devalues our natural and cultural resources that are what makes Cheneau such a wonderful place to live. We must ask ourselves, is it the best use of our resources to clear more tree canopy when lots that have already been cleared for development still sit unused? For years, I will say. I implore the Planning Commission to consider if these two lots are truly worth the continued loss of natural resources when there are plenty of other sites more appropriate and ready for development across Cheneau. Impact on residential quality of life. Lastly, rezoning this parcel to neighborhood commercial introduces the potential for increased traffic, noise, and light pollution, all of which could drastically alter the quality of life that our residents currently enjoy. Many of us choose to live here because we are far away from the various commercial centers sprinkling Cheneau, and transforming this entry into our neighborhood could erode the very essence of what makes our neighborhood desirable. In conclusion, while commercial development has a place in urban planning, the specific context of these two parcels and their proximity to our established residential neighborhood raises several red flags. I urge the Planning Commission to carefully weigh these concerns and consider alternatives that allow for growth while preserving the unique character, quality of life, and environmental health of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. All right, just to make a reminder of, for any issues tonight where they're in support or opposition, we have a total of 20 minutes. So if we have 10 cards up here, essentially, equal time will be two minutes per card, just for the notice here. Yes. Yes. The next card up is OD and Tina Patton. If you're present, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon to everyone. I am Tina Patton with my husband OD Patton, and we are residents of Schimman Court area as well, 31 Schimman Court. as well, thirty-one Schimman Court. And we don't have a lot to mention, just a couple of concerns that mostly outweigh them all that has already been mentioned. So in twenty twenty-two, when we purchased a home, we were closed by the company Keller Williams Realty, and they stated to us that the area behind us was considered green space and nothing will ever be built there. That is one reason why we took the property. So that's what we're still expecting. If not, then that's considered breach of contract. The next thing is the devalue of our home, because where they're talking about building this building or whatever they're building is probably from myself to yourself. That's how close it is. So that's a very inconvenience, which invade the privacy. It invades a lot. The noise will increase, and mind you, wherever a business is, there's a rise in of crimes. And so that is, that's not going to sit well with us as we walk out of our doors. Noise, crimes always have to be on high secure, security of trying to secure our place of business from what has created behind us. So again, in the contract that we closed with Keller Williams, it was mentioned that nothing would ever be built in that green space, and that's what I'm going to sit on from this day going forward. Do you have anything? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next card is Tony Smith.
Thanks. I live at thirty Schimman Court. The proposed rezoning of the southeast and southwest corners of Highway ten and Chalamet Drive from R two to C one and O S present serious concerns for the residents of Schimman and Chalamet, as well as other significant public safety issues. The proposed commercial development conflicts with the purpose and intent of Highway ten scenic corridor design overlay district and poses real hardships on our community, including local law enforcement officers who work diligently to protect our children. For the following reasons, we urge the denial of the rezoning request. Incompatibility with the scenic corridor overlay district. The Highway ten scenic corridor overlay district was established to protect and enhance the scenic and aesthetic quality of the corridor. The introduction of a commercial development with additional traffic and infrastructure runs counter to the objectives of the overlay, which aims to maintain natural foliage, large setbacks and minimal curb cuts to preserve the area's scenic value. This rezoning proposal would increase visual clutter, detract from the corridor's Parkway atmosphere and introduce developments that are inconsistent with the aesthetic goals of the district. Public safety and law enforcement burden. The intersection of Highway ten and Chalamet Drive is already a heavily trafficked area, particularly during school hours. The presence of Robinson Elementary and High Schools are in the immediate vicinity means that hundreds of children travel through this every day. The introduction of commercial traffic, including delivery trucks and customers, would significantly increase the risk to schoolchildren walking, biking or being dropped off at school. Currently, deputies from the Pulaski County Sheriff's Office manage this traffic flow, directing vehicles and ensuring that children and families can cross safely. Adding additional traffic will create additional burdens on these deputies who are already working under stressful conditions, and the additional complexity and volume of traffic may hinder their ability to safely manage the flow, putting students and officers at risk. It's important to remember that just last year, a school resource officer tragically lost his life in the line of duty while managing this traffic area. The increased traffic from a commercial development would make an already dangerous situation worse, adding undue strain on law enforcement and increasing the likelihood of further accidents or injuries. Traffic congestion and infrastructure strain. Highway ten is a principal arterial road and Chalamet Drive is designated as a collector. These roads are already heavily congested during peak hours, particularly around school drop off and pickup times. The addition of commercial entrances and traffic will exacerbate this congestion, creating longer delays and increasing the potential for accidents. This increased traffic will not only frustrate residents, but also complicate emergency response times for law enforcement, fire and medical personnel who may struggle to navigate through the congested corridors during peak hours. Loss of green space and the disruption to neighborhood character. The proposed commercial development will erode the buffer zones and natural green spaces that currently provide privacy and tranquility to residents of the Schimman and Chalamet neighborhoods. The Highway ten scenic corridor overlay district was designed to preserve these qualities, yet this development would bring noise, light pollution and unwanted foot traffic to what are otherwise quiet residential streaks. A fifty-foot wide O S zoning strip between commercial development and residential areas is insufficient to protect homeowners from the noise and disruption caused by a commercial enterprise. The loss of this natural buffer would negatively affect the quality of the life of residents, diminish property values and fundamentally alter the character of the neighborhood. The C one zoning opens the door for a variety of businesses that may not align with the residential character of the community. While the proposed development may start with neighborhood friendly businesses, the C one zoning allows for the possibility of other high-end establishments. Such businesses would not only bring noise and pollution, but could also create security concerns, particularly for nearby homes and schools. This close proximity of these commercial enterprises to residential backyards is a major concern for homeowners who value their privacy and safety. The city's land use plan currently designates this area as residential low density, which promotes development of single-family homes in a way that preserves the neighborhood's quiet scenic environment. Rezoning that area to C one contradicts this designation and threatens to set harmful precedent for future commercial encroachment into residential areas. This proposal for a commercial zone next to schools in residential neighborhoods not only goes against the intent of the land use plan, but also creates long-term risk for the integrity and cohesiveness of the community. For these reasons, I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Dr. Asa M. Womack.
Thank you for letting me speak. I threw my notes away because my eloquent neighbors kind of filled in all my blanks. My wife and I have been at eighty-eight Tournay Circle now for a little over eight years. We moved out to that part. I've been in Little Rock for forty years. We moved out to that part of the city to hopefully escape what is being considered tonight. Okay? You know, I for one think there are enough strip malls, empty shops, empty new shops, but that's just my opinion. But I can say for a fact, to get rid of the buffer zone now between Highway ten and the south part, the south of Highway ten would create a devastating effect as far as the noise is concerned and the traffic congestion is concerned. From my back deck, I can see all of the early morning and late afternoon traffic that's going up and down Chalamet. And it's amazing how many cars and trucks go through there early in the morning and late at night. And it's not quiet during the rest of the day either. But I appreciate the comments from all, I'll call you my neighbors, and I won't be nearly as eloquent as their speech, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next card is Eric Atkinson.
I'm Eric Atkinson. I live at twenty-five Schimman Court, which is on that proposed rezoning district. I'm also the vice president and treasurer of the Schimman Court Property Owners Association. I appreciate the time to talk to you today. I compare fully with my neighbors and friends that the proposed rezoning of the southeast and southwest corners of Highway ten and Chalamet Drive present serious concerns for residents of Schimman and Chalamet neighborhoods, as well as Tournay, as well as significant public safety issues. While they could not be here today, I'd like to introduce you to the rest of my family. This is my spouse Delaney, our three children, Olivia, Jackson and Hazel. This is a picture I took on the first day of school, and while most first day of school pictures are kids standing in front of their home, this epitomizes our family, right? We are lucky and fortunate to walk to school, and when we purchased our home five years ago with the intent of providing our children with the opportunity to live in a safe neighborhood within close proximity to the schools, our kids now walk with pride every morning to Robinson Elementary that they can. And we appreciate having the safe route, which is monitored by the Pulaski County Sheriff's Office. And this rezoning would complicate traffic patterns, as been discussed, bring increased danger to us and our law enforcement officials. And once again, because his name is worth speaking one more time, as you know, on August fourteenth, Victor Montgomery passed because of a traffic collision on Highway ten right there. Our family is by no means the only Schimman and Chalamet Drive neighborhood residents that utilize the safe pathway every day. Speaking of the sidewalks, numerous neighbors go for daily walks, bring their pets along and jog the established sidewalk path. In fact, many mornings, the cross-country team from Joe T. Robinson make their way to Chalamet Drive and utilize that sidewalk to run before school starts. The rezoning would increase traffic in an area already heavily trafficked, and in our meeting with Polished Deltec, we were told that they would add entrances on Chalamet into the developed property, entrances on Chalamet into the developed property. This causes grave concerns as it would break up the uninterrupted pathway and additional congestion and add substantial opportunities for accidents, injury and death. When I told our children this morning that Dad was coming here to speak to you today, my son's immediate reaction was, what's going to happen to the rabbits and squirrels? And I agree with them one hundred percent. When the storage unit construction began on the north side of Cantrell several months ago, we immediately saw an influx of wildlife in our backyard. Continuous development along the corridor like Cantrell Road will interrupt the natural landscape and wildlife that also calls our city home. We pride ourselves as being the natural state, but this rezoning request would degrade the natural landscape and go against the Little Rock future land use plan to protect urban forests and natural areas. As residents of Chenal Valley P O A, each month I receive Chenal Magazine. I'm sure many of you have seen this. It prominently features a map of the entire Chenal Valley Development District. On the map in the magazine and also online on the Chenal Valley website, the land under consideration by you today has been shaded in a dark blue color representing commercial available. It angers me to know that Polished Deltec would advertise these tracks as commercial available before receiving planning commission approval. Additionally, I question why the land was established as R two originally if the long-term plan would be that the commercial property be on this site. It appears to me that Polished Deltec has allowed this land to sit untouched during the construction of the residential neighborhoods to ensure the lots were sold, the homes were built with this backdrop and then decide to rezone. Labeling property as commercially available and delaying rezoning until residential properties are near the end of construction can be considered deceptive, and they do not deserve approval for rezoning. I'd like to just close by commending you for your service on the Little Rock Planning Commission, that you work in public service, and I know you have a difficult task at each meeting to make decisions that impact the daily lives of so many. But I urge you to remember that not all change is an improvement. There are countless commercial properties that are vacant in Clarks, Little Rock. We do not need commercial density around our neighborhood schools, and in doing so, will have a negative impact on our community. I, along with my spouse and my children, and on behalf of the Schimman Court residents who cannot join us today, urge the City of Little Rock Planning Commission to reject this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card we have Brian Angel. If you're present. Okay, all right. And the last card we have is Timothy A. Llewellyn.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak. I don't have notes, couldn't be nearly as eloquent as the past couple of speakers. One thing I want to point out again, because I believe it is something that absolutely must be considered. This land is adjacent to and across the street from a Pulaski County school, a complete school, an elementary school across the street, a junior high and high school next door. I have experience, my house backs up to literally this property. I'm next door to the Miskins. One picture I want to bring in your mind, we have lots of trees. It's an enjoyable thing to sit on our back porch and just look out, see the squirrels. Deer occasionally walk through there. There is one tree just outside of the fifty-foot zone that is a little bit larger than the size of this podium. It's huge. It's beautiful. It's got squirrels running in it all the time. It's got birds landing in it. We have the genuine woody woodpecker type woodpeckers that come to our house. That's just a few of the things that will be gone if you approve this. This, again, I'm going to say, across the street from an elementary school, and according to what Ms. Miskin has said, and what I understand of the zoning change, would allow a numerous amount of businesses to go in there that would be an attractive nuisance to the students in the junior high and high school who wouldn't have to cross the street, and it would be a definite traffic situation that is already there now that they can't do anything, seem to do anything about. I have a standing appointment at Car Tie every month. I left. Is that it? Real quick.
I would like to. Yeah, it's a lapse, but go ahead and go ahead and summarize and conclude your, your position.
Okay. Monday, my position is I oppose. Monday morning, I was going to my appointment at eight-thirty. I pulled out onto Cantrell. There, traffic was blocked or stopped from there all the way up past the hill, past the high school. Of course, the county deputies were there to direct the traffic in and out of the elementary school, but it was backed up that far, and there's no business there now. Can you imagine what it's going to be like if you add the businesses to that? And then ask yourself also, why is the county having to do the traffic control out there? The reason is, that side, that part of that street, all of Highway ten is county, not city. We get very little city police coming into our area as it stands. Doing this would add an enormous risk to all of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So if the applicant can come back up, and we have a card in support, Attorney Spivey, but you can come up and present, address the issues if you will, but.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some of you know, it's been my privilege to appear before you many times over the past thirty years, connection with a variety of developments across the city, but in particular in the Chenal Valley area. Potlatch Deltec and Deltec before it have always taken seriously the concerns of the residents in the neighborhoods within Chenal Valley. We've always made every effort to meet with them. We listen very carefully. Unfortunately, many of the things you heard tonight were not presented to us in the meetings with the neighborhood associations. Let me just say on the front end, and I want to address a few of these points specifically, we are always ready to meet with the neighborhoods and try to address concerns such as uses, layout. Many of you know that the Chenal Valley Architectural Control Committee also exercises control over whatever goes into these locations, and they will do so as they have always done. The graphic you see before you shows the ample allocation of green space. These areas along this road have never been shown on the Chenal Master Plan as residential. The long-term plan has always shown this as non-residential use. Don't know what a outside broker may have represented to someone about what was going to happen out there, but no one at Potlatch Deltec did. My point is simply this. The issues, the arguments, legitimate arguments you heard tonight have been made many times before. We're not unmindful or insensitive to them. The traffic situation on Highway ten and the tragedy that occurred at Joe T. is one we're all very well aware of. It's one which we understand the city, the school district, the county are attempting to address, but this is already a commercial office and non-residential corridor. Uses here are not going to substantially, if materially, increase traffic in this corridor, and these uses are consistent with what's already there. With regard to the Highway ten plan, the Highway ten plan has been in place for decades. I've spoken with you and to you about it many, many times. The staff is intimately familiar with the Highway ten plan and had that as a consideration in making its recommendation to you tonight. That was taken into their consideration as to whether or not these uses were consistent with the overall Highway ten plan. And the Highway ten plan is not something which is monolithic or static. It has evolved over time. It has changed as the Highway ten corridor has changed. Potlatch Deltec has not been unmindful, and we've reached out and made efforts always in any development that was on land owned by Potlatch Deltec to be consistent with the Highway ten plan. We've accepted the judgments of this committee and of the city in those regards, and I think it's fair to say, we've been pretty consistent about being able to work within those guidelines. Let me close, and I'm going to defer to Tim and give Tim an opportunity, but let me just say this. Potlatch Deltec remains ready and willing to sit down with the neighbors and discuss these concerns with them. But this is not a residential corridor. It's never been designated as green space. It's never been designated as a buffer. It's always, it was always going to be developed to suggest, as some of the speakers here have implied, that this is an immutable green space. It's simply not accurate. space is simply not accurate. To suggest that it cannot be developed in a manner that's consistent with the existing residential uses is simply not accurate. Our goal is to do that. Our goal is to try and preserve the green space, which you see has already been allocated and set forth there, but we're also willing to talk with the neighbors. We've always been ready to do it. Let me, let me just stop. I'm not going to go on and beat these arguments to death because many of them, we've heard before, we take them seriously. We don't marginalize them or minimize them in front of you. We know you take them seriously. Let me ask Tim if you've got anything you'd like to add.
Thank you, Bill. My name's Tim Daters. We do intend on complying with the Highway 10 overlay requirements. There'll be a 40-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Highway 10, the right-of-way. There'd be a significant buffer because of the right-of-way width in this location. The buildings themselves will be at least 100 feet from the right-of-way in compliance with the overlay ordinance. On the right side, as you're looking at the east side of Chalamont, there could be no more than two buildings on that tract. There could be no more than three buildings on the tract on the west side of the road. We do intend on leaving a 50-foot zone to open space buffer. In other words, that buffer will not be disturbed during construction, and if there's a particular one tree that's within a foot of that buffer, what kind of part of what we do, Bill, is if there's an issue like that, we'll go out and locate the tree, and we'll see if we need a little bit bigger buffer to preserve a significant tree in that area. But we can make adjustments like that. Potlatch Deltic will continue to control the uses. When they sell attractive land, they write in the allowable uses when in the deed. In other words, if it's going to be a restaurant, then it will be a restaurant is written into the deed. They have landscape requirements which exceed the city's minimums. They are going to preserve the entrance detail at Highway 10 that announces Chalamont-Chenal Parkway. There will be additional monument signs along Highway 10 and probably a monument sign along Chalamont. All the signs in Chenal Valley are monument signs. But again, I think what I've heard tonight, the bulk of those things, I think, can be addressed if there's specific uses that the residents find highly objectionable. I think Potlatch Deltic has been willing to take some of those uses out of the allowable uses on these particular tracks. They certainly have no desire to allow a use which will devalue any adjacent properties because right now they are the adjacent property owner.
Let me also reiterate, and it goes up, I want to make sure everybody understands, some of you may be new to the commission. This buffer is zoned open space. This isn't, you know, a 50-foot discretionary buffer that we're showing on a map. It's zoned open space. It's like a park. Parks are zoned for open space use, so it's going to be there. It's not going to be something that someone who builds there is going to, you know, push it back. I mean, if they do, they'll repair it and they'll restore it. And throughout Chenal Valley, we have zoned open space. It's been a part, an integral part of the development of every neighborhood, whether commercial or residential, in Chenal Valley. So I want to point that out for some of you who may not be as familiar with what that OS designation means. Last thing I'll say is this. As Tim said, and we would have done so if someone had presented some of these arguments which have been very eloquently presented tonight about specific uses, Potlatch Deltic has always been willing to discuss permissible uses. There are commercial areas all along Rowling Road which do not permit a variety of commercial uses. We've always taken those considerations into our view and concern when presenting an area. Again, too, this is neighborhood commercial. We're not talking about C3. We're not talking about intense development. We're talking about neighborhood commercial, which we believe, and the staff evidently believes, but they can speak for themselves, is consistent with what is already in this corridor. Now, we've talked enough. We would be happy to respond to any questions that any of you may have about specific points. Be happy to do that. Ms. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Spivey. Actually, before we open the questions up for the commissioners, we did have a young lady that yielded her time, and I would definitely give her a summary to speak. I think it was, was Tony Woody? Would you? Yeah. So if you would like two minutes, you can have two minutes of that. Yes, if you want to. Yes. You can, your time, you have two minutes, ma'am. You come on up here. All right, please state, please state your name for the record.
Sherry Simon. I'm a member of the Tournay Board. I was not intending to speak. I was intending to listen, but I do feel like I need to speak on just a couple of the topics. I don't know if any of y'all or some of y'all have ever come out to our neighborhood to look at this, but in my opinion and the opinion of people in Tournay, this is definitely not already established and inconsistent and consistent with what's going on out there. It is very, very much of a green space with the schools. There's not much going on. They are building a big storage thing, which we are not happy about, but this does not fit with what's going on out there. Number two, yes, we were given notification, but minimal, and the fellows that we met with were very pleasant and very nice to meet with and very accommodating, but literally, the people on these boards are volunteers. I myself am retired, but my other three board members are full working people with families and full jobs. We were given maybe a week's notice. That's not enough time for even us to get our schedules together, never mind to come up with what we might oppose to something that we were just told about. I need more time to think about that, maybe because I'm in my late 60s, but the other guys are not. We need more time to think about all these things that were brought up. We're never brought up because basically we were told this is happening. Do you have any questions? No time to think, no time to prepare. Boom, you can come to this meeting and prepare. And the other thing I hate to say, but I'm going to say it because I feel like I need to speak to my neighborhood, we don't exactly 100% trust the decisions of Potlatch Deltic. I don't know about their engineers. I've not really spent any time with them, but in our neighborhood, which is Tournay, which is right on the back, we have a six houses, six, I'm sorry, I'm going quick, six lots that were developed without any notion to what the rest of our neighborhood looked like. They look awful. They're falling apart. We had one with a wall fell down. They're very hard to rent right now because of the decisions that this architectural committee made, and we were told that because of the builder they used, this builder hasn't made the same mistakes in other areas of Chenal. We all moved out there to get away from the city stuff. Takes me forever to get to my appointments at UAMS because I moved out there, but there's a reason I moved out there. I wanted my retirement to be quiet and peaceful. So as far as that goes, I hate to say that, but they are not, they did not give us notice. They are, they, I don't trust the architectural committee because of what they already have done in our neighborhood, and I think that's probably all I should say. I'm probably over my two minutes, and that's an emotional speech. I didn't prepare anything, didn't plan, but thank you for listening to me and allowing me to speak, even though I did not place a speaker card.
Thank you. All right, so at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to the commissioners here, and I think Commissioner Vogel had questioned here too, so Commissioner, floor is yours.
I have a question for the applicant, I guess, a couple of questions actually now. Seems like there might need to be a little bit more time to discuss between the applicant and the neighbors. Is that something y'all would be entertaining?
Commissioner Vogel, as you know from many, many past meetings, we've always been open to discussion, and we wouldn't have made a great deal about that tonight if we weren't continuing to be open to discussion. We've heard what has been said. There are many things, a number of things specifically that have been said very articulately and eloquently tonight, which did not come up in the meetings, and of course, we are pretty much like some of the residents who spoke tonight. We're captives of the procedure and the time that's allowed, and sometimes we use the time that's available.
We are not under a time constraint on this project.
We're not under time constraint. There's no one about to move in or start construction, and we would certainly welcome the opportunity for more discussion.
Would you like to defer at this time?
I think, I think that's appropriate to.
We would, if that's the will of the commission, yes, we would consider doing that.
Let me step in there. The will would be towards the applicant. I mean, we can't mandate, I'll be obviously Attorney Spivey, but I mean, there were some concerns that I thought were personally important to the neighborhood and the neighborhood association, and I think that would be on high consideration when, if the neighbor's saying that they have trust issues about the architects and engineering, or maybe just, it seems to be miscommunication. That's what it seems to me, that maybe the neighborhood may not have the full of understanding. And the notification that the young lady said about she, they only had a week for sendout, things like that, to address, so maybe if you all will coordinate, and if you all would like to do a deferral, maybe until the next meeting, October meeting.
Perhaps we might, perhaps we might say an opportunity for better communication, and certainly, when I say the will of the commission, obviously, we know your time's valuable. We don't want to waste your time any more than I'm sure the neighborhood residents do, but Potlatch Deltic is prepared to sit down and talk further. Is that responsive to your?
Yeah, it seemed pretty fair. Any other questions from any other commissioners? Yes.
I've noticed the 50-foot buffer that is built in. On the north side of that, are you planting a solid fence or anything to abate light or noise?
Not at this time. That was one of the items that we discussed with the neighborhood, and that was probably something that we could get worked out. One thing that we do find is that when we leave these buffers, they're typically in a forested condition, and there's not much understory greenery. And so once you've got it, it's a little bit more open, sometimes we come into the buffer areas and actually put additional plantings in the buffer areas to stay green all year long. So I think we can work on that, and we would probably like that opportunity to work with the neighborhoods on that.
And may I say too, Commissioner Hodges, from your work in your own neighborhood association, which I know has been extensive, you know that sometimes ideas don't all get on the table at the same time, and we didn't hear that tonight, but this was something that Potlatch Deltic mentioned in its meeting with the neighborhood.
And it did come up.
And it did come up in the meetings, and so it's certainly something that we're prepared to talk about more.
Before you say something, Commissioner McDonald, I want to say this. Attorney Spivey, are you all, do you all want to defer until next month?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioner McDonald, would you like to ask a question now? Would you, I mean, the floor can be yours if you have particular questions now. You can go ahead.
Well, my question was in regard to what the gentleman that's over Chemin Courts Association, Chemin Courts Association, the gentleman in the back, he had brought up a map that had a layout of Chenal, and it mentioned that this area was commercially available, and I wanted to see if you could explain the reasoning behind that.
I can't. Chenal Valley for years would update their overall map probably once every two years. The overall map that's on their website shows open spaces. It shows existing development. It shows future development. Up until probably two, three years ago, this parcel probably showed up on the map as non-residential. In other words, Potlatch Deltic broke their land uses that were going to be developed into residential and non-residential. Available for commercial means that it's anticipated a commercial development. It obviously would not be commercial development unless it was rezoned, but the intent is not to develop it along Highway 10 as residential.
Okay, so.
Let me, if I may, to address this. I think the word deceptive was used in one description someone made. I don't remember if the gentleman, if it was the gentleman you referenced, but the point is, the Chenal plan has been on and available for more than 30 years, and it has changed and evolved over time. And if one were to follow it, you would see that there have been changes because decisions are made about how certain areas have developed or will develop. I've been down here a number of times with proposals that evolved or changed over time and changed the plan. And so this area, though, I think it's significant that it's never been shown, or at least to my knowledge, it's never been shown, certainly not recently, this area, remember, was out in the county, and we've moved out to it. And it's not been shown any recent times, certainly since these neighborhoods were developed, as residential property. It's been non-residential. Now, if it showed commercial, I'm not aware of that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to say, you said that in the last two years, it may have come up to where it was commercially available. I think.
I didn't say that.
I'm sorry. Someone said that. I think it was Mr. Daters, but it was said that it was commercially available. So I think that is the question that the residents have. Why would it be listed as commercially available when it's currently zoned as R2, and the attempt today is to change it to C1?
It's simply, remember, our plan may not reflect what it ultimately is zoned as, but is part of a long-term thought process that Potlatch Deltic engages in in terms of planning future uses.
Okay, so at that time, when it was planned, why then wasn't a meeting brought up for the residents when the initial thought was this would be a good, a good area for C1 two years ago, whenever that decision was made?
I don't know that a decision as such was made. I think that in terms of contemplating future uses.
Okay, well, at the time of contemplation.
Okay, all right.
Why wasn't that?
And the answer is, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Answer is, I don't know, but as Tim also said, that property would never have been offered or marketed for commercial use unless it had been rezoned for that purpose.
Right.
And that's been consistent throughout the history of Chenal Valley.
I think what is the hangup is the contemplation, how that has, you know, that is what created, I believe that is what created the issue with the residents.
I understand what you're saying.
So that is, that is the end of my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Good point. I think there has been a deferral for item number 11 and 11.1 till next meeting, which is in October. Is that correct, Attorney Spivey?
Yes, well, we're certainly not opposing that at all.
No, 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 I just wanted to confirm just for the record.
As long as that's, yes.
At this particular time, I'm going to have, I'm going to ask one of the commissioners to recommend a motion for item 11 and 11.1, and I guess for the record, we have to do them in separate.
Can we make a motion to defer item 11 LU 2024 19-01 to the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting in October?
What's that date? I think someone.
It'd be the, it'd be the second Thursday in October.
October 10 is the next planning commission meeting.
Yes, to October 10th.
All right, so I have a motion in second for item number 11. Can I get a roll call vote, please, for that? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Vickers?
Yes.
Item 11 has been deferred to the October 10 planning commission meeting.
Ms. Chairman, if I might conclude with the thanks to each of you.
Well, we need to do the second.
Sorry, I'm premature. Forgive me.
Can we also make a motion?
I have it, I have.
Yes, no, thank you. We do have the second deferral for 11.1 before you leave, Attorney. Do you have a motion for a deferral for next month meeting in October 10, 2024?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to defer item 11.1 Z 10,036 to next meeting, October 10th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in second to defer item 11.1. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Russell was absent. Hart?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
And I missed somebody. Vickers?
Baxter, yes.
Baxter, sorry.
Yes.
And Vickers?
Yes.
Item 11.1 has also been deferred to the October 10 meeting. Thank you very much, Attorney Spivey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, for your time this evening. We will reach out to the neighbors and hopefully. We will reach out to the neighbors and hopefully be back to you next month with a plan.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, we'll give them just a second to depart. And do we have the applicant here for item number seventeen? If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium. And while the applicant is coming to the podium, can we please, uh, provide the reading?
Mr. Chair, item seventeen, file number Z ten thousand thirty-eight. This is the Gregory PDR located at seven oh nine to seven seventeen West Thirty-second Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone this zero point four acre property from R two to PDR to construct a residential development. The property is comprised of six lots currently. The lots will be replatted into three lots. Each replatted lot will contain three living units, a two-story duplex in the front portion of the lot and a one-story accessory dwelling unit at the rear portion of the lot. So, so therefore, the overall development will include nine dwellings. Each duplex will be twenty-four hundred square feet in area, twelve hundred square feet per unit and contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The proposed setbacks for the duplexes will be twenty-five feet from the back of curb of West Thirty-second Street to over twenty-five feet from the rear property line and a minimum of five feet from the side property lines. Section thirty-six five oh two typically requires one point five parking spaces per unit for duplex. The site plan does show two spaces per dwelling unit. The driveway servicing the duplex along West Thirty-second Street shall be a minimum of eighteen feet wide. The development will also contain a three, one-story accessory dwelling units or ADUs. One perplated lot fronting West Thirty-second, West Shorts Thirty-second Street. Each ADU will be eight hundred square feet in area, contain two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Typically, one parking space is required for an ADU. The site plan shows a fifteen-foot wide drive extending from West Short Thirty-second Street for each ADU. The proposed parking will comply with code. ADU building setbacks will be over sixty feet from the front property lines, twenty feet from the rear property lines and a minimum of five feet from the side property lines. The applicant notes that exterior construction materials will include board and battening siding, horizontal siding, vinyl windows and fiberglass exterior doors. Roofing will be asphalt shingles. Staff feels the proposed residential development will add to both character and provide diversity of much-needed residential options within this general area. Many of the properties in this area are undeveloped lots. Although the development will create a minor increase in traffic, staff feels it'll be, that it'll have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis, the, and analysis of the agenda staff report and the following condition. And that condition will be that the applicant must submit a replat for the proposed development for staff to review and approve, showing lots three through eight being replatted into three lots as depicted on the site plan prior to filing for building permit.
Thank you, Monty. All right, applicant, can you please state your, your names for the record, please?
Sure thing. I'm Gerald Gregory.
And I'm Veronica Gregory.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Gregory, welcome. Uh, thank you for submitting. Um, before we get started, we do have one card in opposition. If you would like to yield your time and come back up, you can, or you can present now. It's your choice.
No, I would like to defer.
Okay, and then you do have several cards in support of your project, okay? All right, so just take, take your seat for just a few and we'll get you right back up here.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we do have one card in opposition. It's Wendell Jones. If you're present, uh, please approach the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come before you to share with you, uh, our, and I say our opposition. We do have some community stakeholders here that didn't get a chance to, uh, submit their cards. I have my pastor here from the Greater Sinister Baptist Church, which is right about fifty feet from the.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you move the mic up to your, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I have some other, uh, property owners here. I have, uh, church members who are, are part of this, uh, opposition, uh, opposing the, uh, the, uh, not necessarily the property itself. I don't know if any of you, I lived in that neighborhood for eighty, seventy, seventy-eight years. I was born and raised there. And certainly, there are some vacant lots in that area. And we welcome development of those vacant lots. The issue that we have is that where is being located, uh, being built, right there at Thirty-second and, uh, State Street, right there sits on the corner there. Not necessarily on the corner, but just right, right west, uh, east of that. You have nine units. Nine would be able to be rented. You're talking about possibly each unit may have two cars per unit. That's, that's, that's a traffic issue. And another thing I heard, uh, say that it, it add character to the, uh, community. Well, when you come into a neighborhood there and you have a two-story building and there's a single story, single home just east of it, there's a single home just west of it. There's a single home just across the street. Then you have single homes all in that area there. And then you come in and you put a two-story building, it does not add character to that area. Now, duplex, yes, maybe, but a single duplex. And we are opposing it because of the fact that, uh, and also they, there, there's a duplex right on the corner of Thirty-second and State. And they'll almost have developed a, a, a blind sight. When you come up to that corner there and you try to look north, then the, there's, could be a traffic, uh, uh, violation, not traffic, but being able, not being able to see north of that, of, uh, State Street. We just think that the area, uh, is not conducive to putting a two-story building. Certainly, uh, two stories could be out in that area, but where those are located, the single-family homes there, it's just not in, um, I said conducive, we said conducive to the neighborhood. And we would like, I don't know if any of you all have gone out and witnessed the area there where it's going up. Looking on the map, it's just, it's a little bit different than being in the neighborhood itself. I drive that neighborhood every day because I attend church there. I also have some property in that neighborhood. So I'm back and forth there. And that particular property is just not, and the, the development of it, the two-story is just not conducive to the area there. And we oppose that. I don't know if I have the right to, uh, ask anyone else to come up since they did not give a card. Do I have a, uh, the right to ask anyone to come up and voice their concern?
Well, if they didn't fill out a card, then, yes, we just, we want to stick to protocol.
But that's the, uh, concern of, of the members who are here, the stakeholders who are here, that we wish that you would ask the applicant to not go up with the duplex and not rezonate to they, where they can do that. You're putting nine houses on point four acres. Or nine, not, not, you're putting on. You're putting on nine structures on two acres, on point four acres. That is really condensed. That is crowding up that section, that intersection right there, traffic and everything. So we ask that you would reconsider in allowing it to go duplexes up high. Single duplexes, yes. That's our request.
All right, uh, if that's it, thank you very much.
Can I come back if, 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 uh, if I have some more, more questions?
Well, if the commissioners have any other questions for you, then we will address it.
Okay.
So if you're done at this time, then we will address you if, uh, any of the commissioners have any particular questions for you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna bring the applicants back up here. And, uh, you have twenty minutes. Uh, well, you have up to twenty minutes. You don't have to utilize that, but you have up to twenty minutes to state, uh, anything, um, or address any issues, concerns, and basically state your case. But before I do that, you do have, uh, three cards, excuse me. You have three cards in support of you. If you would like to let them speak first.
That's one of my questions. I was gonna ask if they can speak first.
Yes.
To kind of give us some context.
Yes, that's fine. All right. So the first card we have is Jerry Dotson. If you're present, uh, please, uh, come to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jerry Dotson and I'm a ve, investor with, um, Gregory on, on some of these projects that he has going on. And I just wanted to come and say in support of what's going on. He has done a marvelous job in that area. I mean, he's building nice homes that are not like a hood home or something like, he's actually building nice, um, additions to that area that the whole neighborhood can be proud of. He's increased everybody's value around there, um, with what has been done. And the, from what I see in the, the future, the things that he's planning on this, this site here, it's, it's nothing but a add to the, the neighborhood. That neighborhood hasn't been developed, nothing going on new over there twenty or thirty years. And to have somebody come in and do the things that he has going on over there, it is, it is amazing. Um, I heard the young man talking about the, the two-story. Today, I wrote down Gain Street from Roosevelt all the way down to where this is being proposed at. And I counted fifteen two-story houses already there, you know, that's, that's been there for years. And so, I, I can't see why this would be a problem to add another couple of two-story houses down there. It's a, it's a really nice setup that, that's been proposed. And I know it's gonna add value to the neighborhood, like everything else that's been done in that neighborhood. So I would ask that the commission would really consider allowing this, um, proposed, um, venture to go on as, as is planned, you know? It's been a lot of time put into it, a lot of work that's been put into that area. So I would just ask that you would consider, um, going on with what's been proposed on that plan. Thanks.
Thank you. We have Amanda Wayne, if you're present.
Hello, I'm currently attending in one of Mr. Gregory's properties, um, one of the condos that's being proposed today. Um, I do disagree with a few things that was stated by the prior gentleman. Um, I drive that neighborhood every day, coming and going from home. I drive several hours. I'm a nurse. So I drive morning, noon, afternoon, night. I never have an issue with traffic. I don't believe that a two-story, um, development is gonna impede the view or cause a safety issue because it doesn't do it for me today. I've been there since February. I feel like it's a need for this, in this community, because as Mr. Jerry spoke, he, you know, this community has been around for years and there's been no new development. Like, it's time for a change. It's time for it to develop and attract young professionals like me. Families that want to come in and cause a change in the area, bring crime down and, um, I just think it's a positive build for the neighborhood. It will be. I, I don't understand why the church would oppose it. I feel like it'll, um, with the development of non-new properties, you're gonna bring in some new families, some new ideas. So why not boost morale in the neighborhood? Why not boost, um, involvement in the neighborhood? You know, rebuild the new neighborhood. As Mr. Jerry stated, there are two-story homes that already exist in this neighborhood scattered throughout. Um, they're not in a row. They're throughout, but still, it's already exist. Um, so I find a lot of claims false, um, from the opposing side. And I hope you all, um, grant Mr. Gregory and Ms. Gregory permission to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the last card that we have is Mundell Ellis, if I'm saying that correctly. Yes, go ahead.
My daughter is in the process.
Please come to the podium, please.
And speaking of the neighborhood, my daughter is actually in the process. We're making plans now for her to build in that neighborhood because of the development that's been going on. And she's a thirty-year-old, uh, single, um, young lady. And so, watching this development as it's been occurring, it has, it has prompted me to allow my daughter to, to go to this neighborhood and, and to start her life there. So I just wanted to add that in. It, the things that has been going on in that neighborhood has started making a difference. And I have relatives in that neighborhood as well. So, thanks.
Thank you so much. And the last card we have is Mund, is it Mundwell or Mundell Ellis? You have to leave, okay. Okay, but they're in support? Okay, and you all can now come back up here? Come back up to the podium. Feel free to address any, the concerns.
Sure thing.
The floor is yours.
Um, thank you, Mr. Moore, for the summary of our property. Um, it was well explained. Um, I also like to thank you all for your time. Um, but more importantly, I want you to understand that, um, I spent the last twenty years on the architecture AE side. I have built a lot of projects in this community. J T Robinson School, Southwest School, Amazons. I've been involved as a CEO and, and a major player on, in our community. Um, one of the things that promoted me to leave that sector and start our own business is our love and involvement in the community. We are from that community. My wife grew up that community. My grandmother lived in that community. My great-grandmother lived in that community. My mother died in that community. Um, so as a tribute to her, I came, I walked away from my profession to rebuild this community. Uh, so I am very mindful of what's taking place in this community. Um, I want to thank you for the due process because it is important that the community has a say in what's going in that community. I respect that because that's what it takes. But when I think of a community, I think of a very diverse community. I have a list. Can I show, can we skip to the slideshow real quick to, that's, that's it. That is the target zone, the songbird that's focused on. That's from Ro- Roosevelt to Martin Luther King to Thirty-third to Arch Street, Highway three sixty-five, three sixty-seven. All those blue tabs are the existing homes that we've already built. In those homes, homes and townhomes, in those homes, we have a list of, these are the people that I think of when I think of community. These are the people that have brought, came back to, to this community, to a underserved community, to a place where thirty percent of the community is empty or dilapidated properties. We took a huge risk in this community. When everyone else told us we couldn't do it, we, we did it. And we're doing it. We're bringing people back like Ms. Wayne that just came up, which is a registered nurse. We got a senior UPS driver that has came into this community. We have a public defender lawyer for our city that has came back into this community. We have a, uh, analyst for the, our, so Demogar Gazette in this community. We have an insurance agent that have moved back in this community. We have a retired military veteran that has moved back into the community. We have a Realtor that just recently moved back into the community. We had an LPN nurse that has moved back into the community. We have a retail store manager that has moved back in the community. And we have a legal clerk, a clerk that's moving next week into a home to one of the townhouses that Mister, that the gentleman spoke of that's on the corner, moving in. And we have thirteen advocates for the other door. There is a need in our community for homes. It is sad to see that they're opposing it, but I understand and I respect it. But if you can show a couple more slides, I want to help them see what I'm seeing. That is the area, the church, Center Street is the big, the big building, uh, Center Star, I'm sorry, is the big building. My project is not encompassing their space, their view, or stopping any egress. They have, their concern he mentioned was traffic flow. Well, that's a church. He have more traffic coming in on a Wednesday night and a Sunday than anybody else in the community. We work hand in hand with that. We work around that. We live around that. It's okay. That's part of the community. Um, I'm asking them to respect our development, the same way we're respecting their egress on Sundays and Wednesdays. And the other event, we've been a big advocate in the community. We've partnered with them on, uh, backpack drives. We host movie nights to educate the community on how to buy homes. Um, we do the trash pickup. I provide dumpsters. I drop off trailers. I'm not the typical contractor that's coming here to grab money and move. I'm here to make a difference. And that's what we're doing. I understand their height, their concern with height, and I, and I. I understand their height, their concern with height, and I, and I say that whole hardly, I do understand it, but I'm within the legal limit of height. I'm less than twenty-five feet. Uh, we took the roof off of it, so because I was close to the church, it's not a typical project that I would normally do. I'm a, we are more of a traditional builder, but I'm taking a risk to do a more sleek, sleeker design to cut the roof off and to lower the profile, so we do not impose on the neighbors that's looking across the park. What they're looking at now in that lot, can we, can we go to the next slide, please? These are the homes that we've built so far. These are the type of homes that we have, we have proposed. These are the, the resident lives in these homes that we have proposed, that I've just mentioned. Next slide, please. That's a two story home that we're currently building on Gang Street, currently. Um, that's, that's where Mr. Dotson, uh, Mr. Dotson said he's going to invest. That's the investment his daughter's buying. That's the investment. Um, uh, go to the next one, please. This is what we're proposing. It's something different from, from our style of architecture, but what I realize in a community, that's what the younger generation is asking for. That's what they're looking for. That's the soma. That's one of the fastest growing areas, and I'm talking with that developer, I'm with Mr. Moore, I'm understanding where he failed. Uh, I understand where he dropped the ball and, and trying to partner with the community. I'm trying to close that gap. I'm there every day. I'm not a, I'm not a telephone contractor. I run my skister. I dig my footings. I lay out my concrete. I am there every single day, Monday through Saturday, from sunup to sundown. Anybody in the community can stop by and talk to me at any time. Uh, I have repaired neighbors' porches. I have seen siding come off their house. I've volunteered and gone over and fixed it with no cost to them, um, because it's about community development. Um, I'm open to a conversation, uh, to alleviate their concerns, but I am not open to lowering the height because these are shotgun style lots, and I cannot create the growth that we need in the area by adding additional shotgun style homes. That's no longer our grandfather's community. It's not. We have to embrace change, and the change is we're bringing more people in a community that wants to be there, that's viable community. We're not doing hoods. We're not doing, um, government programs. We're looking, we're, we comb through our applicants to make sure we have viable people going into these, to these properties, uh, that has substantial income, that can add value, that come to the community meeting. My wife is now the president of the South End Community, in this community. She's the president. Um, we're there every month. I've been there the last two months with this project. We've mentioned it. The people in this room, when I look around, I've seen none of them at those meetings, none of them. Um, that's a concern. I like to, I know I've been long-winded, I apologize for that, but here's my wife.
Um, thank you all again for, um, hearing our concerns and, um, letting us inform you on our intentions on the community. Um, as he mentioned, I am the president of the South End Neighborhood Group. Um, anytime we do have a project or we are looking to develop, um, new projects, we always bring it to the community. They are in one hundred percent, um, agreement with the development. They are eager to see new development and new commercial buildings to come back into this area so that it can feel like a community again. Um, and also, I'm a Realtor, so I'm very invested into vetting out the best people that we can get into our properties that we own, so we're not giving them away, we're not selling them, where we are worried about who is it going to be coming into the community. Um, so we are very, like he said, that we are very invested into making sure that we get the best candidates that we can and tenants that we can to, to occupy these spaces.
But that, that is a great, that's a slideshow. I took the liberty to put this slideshow together, uh, and not to cast a stone because at the end of the day, I want a partnership, I want the relationship in the community. But Center Star, uh, that's a forty-five foot structure, massive. That's the duplex. That's one of them. That's the house next door, single story next door. Because of the to, to topograph and the way it falls, these homes are not standing monstrous on a corner. Uh, you guys have vetted that last project and did a good job, and it required me to slide the project back, so we do not have a blind spot, as you can see in that picture. I didn't, that's the stop sign. You can obviously see around that corner. Uh, there's not a blind spot. You can see the roof line. That's a single story compared to a two story. I'm not much taller. I'm eight foot on the bottom floor. Wish I could be taller, but with, to not create a monsterous structure, I'm staying eight foot on the bottom, eight foot on the top with a one foot ceiling joist. That's where we are. Um, keeping a, a low profile roof without doing a, a seven twelve roof pitch, I'm taking the landscape and the architecture into consideration. I designed them myself. Um, I have a formal architectural background. I design my projects to fit the space, to fit the space. So, uh, can we go up one slide, please? We've, yes, we've been blessed. In that seven two two, uh, seven two two zero six zip code, my wife and I, our plan, if they would like to come to the community, is to invest another, ten million dollars over the next four years. Currently, we've put two point nine million dollars, not of, um, investor money, not, we grasp, we grassroots ourselves. We've put two point nine million dollars of, of our equity, our funds into this community, banking on building a community that my mother could be proud of. With that conclusion, uh, I want to turn it over to my wife to close it out, if you like.
No, again, thank you all for your time and listening to us. Uh, we just hope that you can consider, keep in consideration everything that we have mentioned today, and, um, we leave it to you all to make the best decision.
Uh, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Gregory, and, um, I've, I'm personally familiar with the area and, um, seen some of the projects and works that you've done. I mean, this particular project to me, I think is, I think is valuable, is good. We need this type of equity in bringing the young professionals in, uh, this community and the area. A lot of us grew up there, a lot of us played around that area, and, uh, you know, quite frankly, it needs some revision. Now, is there growing pains with everything, especially in a city like this where it's the capital of the state and it's growing? And, you know, a hundred percent people may not agree, but, uh, there are, again, there are growing pains with, uh, with anything. But I mean, I like the development, I like the development, I think it's, it's a positive in, in the community overall. Uh, but at this particular time, I want to open it up to the commissioners if they have any particular questions at this particular point. Before I do that, Monty, did you have a statement?
Uh, just a point of reference for the commission, uh, the current zoning of this property allows a maximum building out of thirty-five feet as it sits today, and Mr. Gregory's going to be quite a bit under that.
Any particular questions from any of the commissioners? Go ahead.
I'm all, uh, uh, yes, thank you for the presentation. I do thank you, uh, for coming out. Uh, as with similar proposals, I'm always concerned about the space. Uh, look, uh, I see the lot available, and it looks like you're putting three of these, um, homes on this particular lot, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Well, three single families.
Three single family homes, right?
Yes, on the backside.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and individual parking behind the, the, from the, the garages, the garage spaces in the back of these homes, correct?
Uh, no, sir. So, to clarify, the three units closer to the church on short Thirty Second, those are single story homes, um, single story homes. Um, basically, if you go down, can you jump through a slideshow? I actually have a, a visualization of the facade of what those are going to look like. So, right there on the left side, so they're small structures, the, the, the architectural, not the ones of the, the, uh, colored diagrams on the right, the ones on the left. The colored diagrams is what's on the front. The actual AutoCAD drawings are what's on the back. They're smaller structures with parking up front.
Okay.
Uh, that's the single story because I didn't want to intrude on the church.
Got it. Thank you very much. I was looking for that. I was looking for exactly that. Appreciate it.
Any other commissioners, any other questions or comments? And if not, I will, uh, love to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item seventeen Z dash ten thousand thirty-eight.
Have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Can I please get a roll call vote, please? Baxter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Uh, thank you very much, applicant, for coming out.
Commissioner Hodges, may I have your vote, please? I apologize.
Yes.
Sorry. I try to stagger it easy, keep you guys off balance, but the, the motion's been approved.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you, applicant, for coming out. Thank you, everyone, for coming out on this particular issue. And, uh, ladies and gentlemen, at this particular time, I don't think we have any other items. Monty, do you have a statement?
One thing that, uh, I don't know if you noticed or not, the orange cones that were in the parking lot in the back of City Hall, this kind of happened last minute, so we weren't able to really get in touch with you and let you know. That's reserved parking for you guys on the day of the meeting, so where the, where the orange car, cones are is where it's parking for you guys if there's not any, you know, any, where else that you want to use.
Okay. All right, do we have any new business? If not, this meeting is adjourned.